Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November 29th Select Board Meeting. I'd like to bring this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment this evening? No? Okay. We will move right into our governmental reports. We have the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the Targeted Economic Development Strategy Presentation. Welcome.
What's the best way for me to present here?
If you can sit at the table.
Grab a chair.
Yeah, yeah, then I can flip through it.
So we have Nate Robinson from the Community and Economic Development Planner.
Yeah. Thank you to the Select Board for being here today and thank you to the town of North Andover for inviting us. We are longstanding partners with the town of North Andover. Every once in a while, we like to get before the Select Board and kind of fill them in on the details of the work that we're doing every day with the city around economic development goals and initiatives as a region. So for a little introduction, my name is Nate Robertson. I'm the Community and Economic Development Program Manager at the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And bear with me as I, let's see, I'm going to scroll down here. And I'm with my colleague Ian Burns, who's our Targeted Economic Development Specialist. And just to give folks a little bit of background on who and what Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is, we are one of several RPAs in the state, regional planning agencies. And we fulfill this interesting role in Massachusetts. Massachusetts is sort of unique where we have very strong municipalities. Each town and city, you know, writes its own rules and runs its own affairs. And then we have the state. And there's not a whole lot in between. And so back in the 50s and 60s, they, through a series of legislation, created regional planning agencies, which sort of served this intermediary. Where we work with a certain target, sort of a certain territory of municipalities, around common goals and informing program areas. We have a Community and Economic Development Department, Transportation Planning Department, a Geographic Information Systems and Information Technology Department, and an Environmental Planning Department. And we have these four pillars because we know that economic development doesn't stop at a municipality's borders. The businesses here in North Andover rely on workers in Haverhill and Lawrence and Andover. Environmental concerns in Andover also impact other communities. And same goes for transportation. All of our communities work together around collective visions and align actions and resources around collective goals. So we at the Planning Commission serve this goal as sort of conveners in the region to work around these shared visions and shared goals that benefit everybody. We've got a number of different sort of programmatic thrusts at the Community and Economic Development Program, but really, our mission is to generate pathways to wealth. We have an abundance of wealth-building businesses and industries here in the Merrimack Valley. We have a long history of being a prosperous region with a lot of opportunities to continue that tradition today. We sort of build these pathways to wealth through a couple of different things. We focus on target, really targeted, wealth-building industry clusters. So making sure the industries that we know are really good in our region, that we know have a long history of enabling people in this region to build and retain wealth, like manufacturing, biotech and life sciences, information technology. We know we want to keep these industries here. So we focus on really incubating those industries. And we also focus on small business, building small business ecosystems. We want to make sure the small business community that we have, that make our city centers and our downtown so vibrant and thriving, have all the resources they need to continue growing and thriving in our communities. And so we do that through a number of different initiatives. We have our Targeted Economic Development Strategy, which my colleague Ian will get into a little more detail on in a minute. We have our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. This is a five-year sort of guiding document that guides all of our programmatic efforts. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is made every five years. We're actually coming up on our five-year review period. And it's made in conjunction with each of the 15 municipalities in the Merrimack Valley. And so there's where we identify what sort of common things we're all going to work on together. We do produce housing production plans in all 15 of the municipalities that we work in. We provide small business assistance. We're working with a number of North Andover businesses right now, providing technical assistance to help them recover and become more resilient after COVID-19. And we also operate a regional economic development website. It's wearemv.com. And there, we have a number of different things and I encourage people to check it out. But it serves this place where there's so many local programs and state programs and federal programs, and especially in the wake of COVID-19, that were rolled out for small businesses and big businesses alike. And if you didn't know about them, sometimes you missed them. And we heard this time and time again, where we need one place to go where we know where all the stuff is, you know? Because businesses are usually pretty busy running their business. So we created We Are MV to serve as that platform. In our Business Resources section, we have everything from small business technical assistance, how to make a business plan, to financing for medium-sized businesses, to state tax credits and what those programs are. So it's a real, a library of business resources where businesses can kind of peruse at their own speed or talk to somebody at the Planning Commission about what's out there. We also have an available property inventory, all of the commercial real estate in the 15 cities and towns. We've got some success stories highlighting small businesses and a number of other resources. And so we operate this website as a platform to really consolidate all this information for all of our different municipalities and business partners. But I want to talk a little bit about the Targeted Economic Development Program. And I hinted at this a little bit when I started talking about targeted industry clusters, making sure that those industry clusters, we know, help attract wealth and allow people in this region to build wealth and have good jobs and get nice homes. We want to make sure that those industries stay here. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Ian, who's going to talk a little bit about what the work we've been doing in this round looks like.
Thanks, Nate. I was actually reflecting tonight before we started tonight that the last time I was presenting to the Select Board was about seven years ago when I was getting approval for my Eagle Scout project here. So it's nice to be back in a bit more professional capacity now. But as Nate was hinting at, you know, we focus on this industry cluster strategy. And this came out of a variety of reports and actually started after the Columbia gas disasters from a few years ago. So after those gas disasters, there was a few studies and reports that were done. And we found that there was no regional economic development strategy to really target those industry clusters and retain large businesses in our region. This map here is highlighting different regions of the state that how we call Regional Economic Development Organizations. And those are dedicated independent organizations that provide that kind of industry support. You'll see Andover, North Andover, Lawrence, Methuen, Haverhill is not covered by any Regional Economic Development Organization. So that's a gap that we had here in the Merrimack Valley. And we wanted to try to fill that after seeing that from some reports that we had done. And that report also was highlighting how our region was home to, as Nate was saying, some coveted industries, places like manufacturing, biotech, defense. These are industries that are highly recruited from other areas of the state and even country. We have them here in large quantities and we want to keep them here. So when we looked at that, we tried to figure out what our best strategy was to move forward and keep those industries around. Out of that report, we got funding from the Columbia Gas Disaster Innovation Fund to start the Targeted Economic Development Strategy. I'm just going to zoom out here so we can see this full slide. So this full strategy that we came up with was really a coalition of advisory committees, MVPC, and the business community to look at these targeted industries, see what their challenges are, see how we can support them in the area. So as you'll see in this kind of flow chart here, we're looking at the ecosystem, if you will, of the TED's work. So we have an advisory committee that's made up of economic development staff from each municipality, Andover, North Andover, and Lawrence. The Lawrence Partnership, which is an economic development nonprofit in Lawrence, and the Essex County Community Foundation, which is administering the Columbia Gas Innovation Funds. And I'll mention here Andrew Shapiro was going to join us tonight, the Director of Economic Development and Community Development for the town. He's been a key partner in this work and has been working, handing love with us throughout this entire thing. So he couldn't be here tonight, but he has been a key partner as well as the town in this work. We meet monthly, sometimes more than monthly. I think there are some weeks that we see Andrew three times. So it's been a good relationship for us to be building on. So we work with that advisory committee to kind of figure out the path forward that we want for this work. And then, of course, the business community is, you know, the largest part of that in making sure that they are supported throughout the work that we're doing. So as we designed this program, we were kind of looking at, actually before my time at the Planning Commission, they were looking at what their goals wanted to be for the first year. We kind of got a year of funding from the Essex County Community Foundation, from Columbia Gas Disaster Innovation Funds. And we wanted to see what would be the best way forward in this first year, kind of get our feet under us as we move forward. So a few things that we wanted to do, one was meet with those other regional economic development organizations that I mentioned on that map earlier. So see what they're doing, you know, the work that they're doing in areas of the state, how we can emulate it, what we want to do that they're doing, what we might need to do differently. So we talked with several of those to get their strategies and learn from them. Additionally, we wanted to curate a list of contacts for area businesses in Andover, North Andover, and Lawrence. So out of those industry clusters, you know, we realized that Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover, the economic development staff in those cities and towns, didn't have the necessary capacity to be constantly building relationships. I think between Columbia Gas and then COVID, they were really focused on the small business community, which of course was super important during those times. But because there had to be so much emphasis on small businesses, we kind of lost sight of the larger business parks, the larger manufacturers. So we wanted to add capacity to that and meet with those businesses, generate some contacts, build some relationships with the large businesses. In the majority of cases with the businesses we're reaching out to, it's the first time they've really heard much from the city or town at all. It's the first time they're learning about the resources we have, the state has, the town has, to help them out. So we developed a list of contacts, you know, found the information, reached out, met with several employers, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then after that, we're kind of looking at all the challenges that they mentioned to us, what they're struggling with right now, and curate some programming to that to respond to their challenges. So just a big picture overview, after meeting with all of those businesses, we met, over the past few months, we've met with over 20 large employers. And I should say this outreach is ongoing, it's not over now. This graphic on the left here of the screen was last updated at the end of October. But we've met with over 20 businesses in the three towns. But although it's, 20 might not seem like a giant number, those are big businesses. As you'll see, that's covering over 10,000 local employees and over $3.4 billion in combined revenue with the businesses that we're meeting with. So it really is the larger employers in our area. Out of those conversations, we learned, as I'm sure will be no surprise to you or any business listening, their number one challenge is workforce right now, recruiting and retaining enough workers to fill the positions that they have. That was an issue that, you know, we heard about before COVID. It was one of the number one issues prior to COVID. But of course, COVID made things even more challenging for them. And in response to that, like I said, we want to do programming to help them out. Our first effort for programming and responding to their challenges, we hosted a workforce recruitment and retention panel. So we had a Q and A and a panel discussion with several workforce leaders, community leaders, business leaders in our area to talk about strategies that businesses can learn from, you know, other business leaders and other community partners about how they can be recruiting and retaining workforce. So that was our first programming in that area. And we're looking forward to building off of that and using that as kind of our stepping stone for future work. Talking a little bit specifically about North Andover here in the community. So North Andover, we have had great conversations and have started building relationships with five businesses in town. And we have over a dozen additional businesses in our pipeline that we're reaching out to and informing connections with. And like I said before, they are no different than the other employers in Andover and Lawrence with workforce being their number one concern. And then, of course, when we talk to them, we also wanted to hear the small things, minor infrastructure concerns, something like a pothole at the end of their road or something like that, because we don't want those small issues to pile up. And like I said, so Andrew and myself are involved in a lot of these conversations. And he's always following up and doing a good job of addressing, especially those little things that can be handled pretty quickly and making sure that they're satisfied in town. And then the last piece I'll just touch upon is what we're looking for moving forward. So into 2022, as we've kind of been evaluating this work, what we want to look at in the next year. So first of all, as I mentioned, continuation of outreach. That business outreach is ongoing. It will continue. There's plenty of businesses to meet with. And we want to meet with the ones that are just coming to the town now. Regional Workforce Coalition, there's a lot of workforce-oriented organizations in the region. And we kind of want to build that ecosystem to make sure that the businesses have access to the resources they need and connecting all the organizations that are working in this space, making sure that they're connected with the business community. And we're all working cohesively for programmatic goals. As Nate mentioned, we have enhanced regional marketing with wearemv.com. We're also working with cities and towns to develop specific business development websites for each community. So in North Andover right now, we're working with Andrew and others at the town to create a business development website specifically for the town, which would be an extension of the town's website, giving a guide to businesses on how to start a business, how to maintain a business, what town resources are available, that sort of thing. You know, really trying to create that small business and large business culture here locally to make sure they have all the resources that they need. And then one last thing that we talked about as a group was some sort of local procurement program to connect local service providers with the large, what we call anchor institutions in the region. So those are folks like Lawrence General Hospital, Northern Essex Community College, Merrimack, big organizations that are rooted in the community, won't be leaving, but have large purchasing power. We have a goal of connecting them with service providers, folks like food providers and cleaning service providers, making sure that we can build more of a local economic ecosystem and keep the money here locally instead of them sourcing some of their resources outside of the region. So that is a little bit of a high-level summary of what we're doing in the TED's program. And as Nate mentioned, the work we're doing in the Community and Economic Development Department at large. But certainly happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the program we have. And we're thankful to have the time here to update you on what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah. My first reaction actually was a little bit of both of you. You use phrases like, "We're here to create wealth." Well, I'll tell you, that's a great opener and I think really important. And that's what people really want to hear. And you talked about jobs, keeping jobs and creating jobs. So I think you've touched upon two key issues that businesses, what's really important to them. And that's what, both of those will make it all work. So good on you for both of you presenting that, you know, just right up front. Thank you. What was your Eagle project?
I was doing five bridges and I was getting...
Oh, okay, now I remember. Back to business.
Almost every day, I love those foot bridges.
Thank you for that.
Anyway. Yeah, go ahead.
So have, has your commission reached out to the NAMA, the Northern End of Emergency Association? I mean, within, and we have members of the board here. That is a fairly active merchants association here in North Andover. And I think they would benefit from some of the information that you have and to be able to present that to them, especially the website with the different resources that are out there. But I think that would be a good organization to touch base with. They have both small, medium, and I don't know how big they go with businesses, but probably small...
A lot of small businesses.
Yeah, small and medium-sized businesses.
More small businesses than big businesses in this country.
I think it would be good to reach out there. And Ian, with roots in North Andover, you probably know most of a lot of people out there. So it'd be good to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's a wonderful suggestion.
And even, you know, as you are co-developing this site with the town, I think input from that organization as well and, you know, just making sure the links are all tied off with their websites as well would be very beneficial for everybody.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's great feedback.
I'm a member of the Merchants Association Board and would say that we actually are working with you in another, somebody else, not you. So there's a lot of overlap. And I think tying all of those things together would be fabulous. I know that you've given us a little bit of funding to do some groundwork. And I see a lot of opportunity here. We've also been working with Andrew a little bit more, so I would, will pursue that a little bit more. I mean, he's everywhere and does everything, so why not? Why not add to his list? So this was really informative and I am so appreciative of the work that you're doing. And my gears are turning about how to bridge the NAMA piece of it.
Absolutely. Really, that's one of the reasons we came here today was getting those wheels turning, getting new connections, developing relationships. This is what makes, you know, any program successful. So, you know, our municipalities are our first partners. But oftentimes, chambers of commerce, merchants associations, I mean, those are close seconds. And they make, we work together very closely. So happy to continue in developing closer ties with the Merchants Association locally. Yes.
Thank you.
One thing that stood out to me, which is, you said right at the end, the local procurement. And one of the things that seems to me coming through this pandemic is the recognition of shortening your supply chain, also really identifying the value of local partners and resources, that there are economic efficiencies to that sometimes. But also the, just sort of, the opportunity to incrementally grow the business or to network in a way. So I really like the idea of the local procurement. And, you know, if I was to kind of say, one thing that I would watch for is the ability to try and grow that. Because I think that is a really powerful driver to a lot of businesses. You know, as I talk to management of companies, they're, this pandemic has created an incredible opportunity in the sense of everybody's examining all pieces of their business, where it comes from, who my clients are, why I'm getting business, how that's coming in. And so that part to say, "We can help you get that product or make that connection," is something people are just starving for right now. And what you, the advantage you have is, one, you're independent, right? So you don't have a bias, right? You don't have a direct product to sell. And two, you have the power of all these communities and all this knowledge, right? Which an individual institution just doesn't really have the time and the resources to get. So, you know, I think that is something that, on a banner, I think it could be a big attractor for what you're doing.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you mentioned that because it wasn't, you know, as I was going through the slides, we had original goals and the procurement wasn't originally part of the strategy going forward. But as this year progressed and interest really emerged from the advisory committee of the folks we were working with to invest in that strategy. So that was, it's new to us. And over the past two months, we've been reaching out to other chambers, the Boston Chamber and other state organizations that have done this type of procurement work to learn kind of what their strategy has been, what our lane can be in that work. So we're excited to start that next year.
Awesome.
I just, I think it's great that you're doing this work. It's so important to keep the businesses here. And it really supports our community and our residents and to grow. And that's, to keep us, it's such a strong community, right? The Merrimack Valley, I always joke that you never really leave, right? So it's great to have these big businesses. And I think to make that tie between the big business and the small business, in your research, did you find any gaps in what we have? I mean, you said we have, we obviously have Raytheon and all the, some big business taken care of. But are there gaps that we don't have that maybe would promote businesses to be attracted to be here?
We've got Amazon. We do get Amazon.
I think there are a couple of different factors. And I'm sure Nate can speak to it as well. I think we have some really strong industries, like manufacturing, for example, is such a strong cluster here compared to the rest of the state. We have a large amount of manufacturing businesses compared to the rest of the state. And I think some of the factors that are, that may be preventing folks from coming here or if they want to leave here, it's first workforce, are they looking to be closer to Boston for a workforce reason? Second, space-wise, you know, what kind of commercial property are they looking for to move here? You know, the former Lucent Spot, which is now Amazon, you know, was the largest available property in the region. And Amazon would be taking up a good chunk of that. But I think a lot of places are looking for that, that free space. And then secondly, or thirdly, I should say, cost of housing is another concern of a lot of the businesses coming in. We talked to a few companies that said when they're trying to hire and recruit for more of the upper level positions at least, you know, they know they're going to have to offer bonuses if they're recruiting, not only nationally, but even within New England to come to the Merrimack Valley, looking at the cost of living here is a concern for them. All the way from the top down, even their lower-level employees, you know, if they can't afford to live here, then they can't work here and fill those open roles. So that's a concern as well.
Yeah, really, I'm not, I think you hit, all those are really key points. One statistic recent, that I recently saw that really stuck out to me is business park occupancy, which is at like 98%. It is at a historical high, which is a great problem to have. It means we have a lot of businesses here. But it presents an interesting challenge where we have more businesses that could probably come here. And finding them that space and finding where those opportunities to continue to grow as communities, that's challenging. And it's oftentimes a long lead on some of that stuff. So there's definitely a lot of work we can be doing, identifying where those spaces are for continued growth, identifying where the next generation or work, even this generation of workers are going to continue living in this region. Those are, those are the two real, you know, emergent ones that pop into my head.
I think you'll also find the, our business tax rate is very competitive here in North Andover. We work really hard to keeping it attractive. So I would hope that that also has come to the forefront, especially for the, what is our actual, do you know, do we have the actual number of what it?
14, 16.
14 something.
That's the residential, right?
Yeah, the residential is 14...
1912?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Well, anyways, it's, it is pretty competitive, so.
Yeah, absolutely. One thing we consistently hear when we meet with businesses is they're happy to be here. They like North Andover, which is, it's great. You don't hear a lot of hemming and hawing about tax rates or this and that. Businesses are across the board very happy to be operating in North Andover.
From someone outside.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's great. And I, that's a great point, right? You gotta, your workforce needs to afford to live in the, you know, and once you start having to commute and you want to be able to live and work and play in a certain radius, right? So I think that's great.
I'm curious though, so I know that, you know, some of our properties are, you know, they're definitely for people who have means to pay for them. But with the interest rate, it, even a very nice property is cheaper than what could be a $3,000 a month rent. So I'm a little surprised that if they're going to make the move, this is the time to do it before the rates change. But they're still so very competitive that you, with a reasonable down payment, your mortgage could be cheaper than rent for a very nice home.
So I, confession, I just went from renter to homeowner.
Okay, now you get it.
The math is very fresh for me.
Yes, of course it is.
And totally, I mean, to that point, yeah, I'm paying less now on my mortgage than I was on rent.
And you have a much nicer property, I'm sure, than where you were staying. And you're building equity and I'm a real estate broker, if you haven't figured that out already. But that's what I tell, tell the buyers, it's just, do you love the house? Yep. Do you like your payment? Yep. Is it cheaper than rent? Yep. Are you going to be moving anytime soon? Nope. I'm like, well, there's your answer.
Yeah, yeah. It's just so competitive, you know? Getting that down payment, buying a property.
It will happen. You just have to be quick and be serious.
Yeah, absolutely.
It worked for you, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A part of that math too is, in terms of the employers that are struggling, and I'm thinking of the manufacturers that are struggling to recruit, like their floor workers, let's say.
I understand.
Their hourly workers, you know, they, with the cost of rent, like Nate was saying in the math of the down payment, as you're familiar with being a broker, being able to save up for that down payment with the cost of rent, I think is an impact on that part of the workforce, for sure.
Yeah, I think that's a huge problem, right? That the rent is, rent is more expensive than a mortgage payment, right? Like, that's, that's not the way it's supposed to work.
If they're willing to start small, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedroom condo, that they're still going to be better off. Go in with somebody on a multifamily or something.
And Madam Chair, I dud myself for a minute, but the commercial industrial rate is 1873 and the residential is 1353, per fiscal year 22.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you guys so much. This was great. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
We hope to see you again.
Yes, yes, come back anytime. All right. Next, we will ask our town clerk, Dawn Warren, to come up and talk to us about our precinct maps and the election calendar.
Well, thank you for having me tonight and allowing me to provide an update for the 2020 reprecincting and the annual town election calendar. reprecincting and the annual town election calendar for 2022. Since we last met, the legislative redistricting lines were finalized. I worked directly with Secretary Galvin's office to match our precinct lines to what was approved during the legislative redistricting process. What you have before you is a revision to what was previously approved on October 12th. The black lines indicate the former approval made by the board and the new precincts are represented in color. Small shifts were made in precincts three, four, five, six, seven, and eight to accommodate the legislative split needed in separating precincts seven and eight. This revision ensures that we will not have any sub precincts in our town for state elections. If the select board were to vote to adopt the new map and the required paperwork, a second certified vote would be submitted to the LEDRC for further review and approval. The first submission was approved back on November 5th. Changes in precincts would go into effect on December 31st and residents will be notified by mail and on social media challenges, channels. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time regarding the revision.
Just a simple question. How many folks, how many households?
Um, it, it ends up adding, netting out to zero, but because we moved from, from precinct three sixty, from precinct four thirty-five, precinct five sixty-three, precinct six eighty-six, and precinct seven seventy-two. So those, they just kind of had to morph to make sure we kept within that five percent range as well as keeping that strong line between seven and eight and the, the lower precincts.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by keeping the strong line.
So if you look at the map, there's a line that separates seven and eight from five and six. So that's where the legislative split happens.
Uh, okay. Now I think I get it.
So it, it kind of splits North Andover in half, sort of in the middle. So we had to shift just, you know, along the outskirts of the others to remain within a five percent variable between each number of precincts. The main goal when talking to Secretary Galvin's office, who by the way, were phenomenal to work with, was to make sure that that line stayed the same as what was approved in 2010. So those lines didn't change when the, the lines were redrawn for the 2020 numbers. Does that make sense?
So does that mean so precincts three, five, and seven would have different legislative ballots at?
So, no, to answer the question, that, that would mean that seven and eight have different ballot styles. And one, two, three, four, five, and six have a different style.
I'm looking at the long line, line. So they, so within the precinct, they'll all have the same ballots. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I was looking at the wrong line, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
And this keeps us within the, what was it, four thousand?
It does. Yep. On the side of the map that you may not have in front of you, which I certainly can provide, everything is either three nine, three seven, or three eight.
And we're fine with that until the 2030 census?
None of that information has changed. That is all, that's all okay to grow over.
Now, I received a call from one of our state elected officials that mentioned that, that they would be switching or taking parts of North Andover. Did that still happen that?
So what ended up happening, what, where, where we finalized, we were in the second Essex and Middlesex and the first Essex and Middlesex for Senate. And in the House were the fourteenth Essex and the eighteenth Essex.
So say that again for the Senate?
Sure. The Senate, we are in the second Essex and Middlesex and the first Essex and Middlesex.
Interesting. Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you want to go over the town election?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So just wanted to announce some of the important dates that surround the annual town election in 2022. So the election will be held on March 29th, 2022 and nomination papers will be available in the town clerk's office beginning Monday, December 13th, 2021. As a reminder, 50 certified signatures are required for inclusion on the ballot. And please be certain to get additional signatures. The last day to submit nomination papers is Friday, February 4th, 2022. I'm sorry, the last day to obtain nomination papers is Friday, February 4th, 2022. The last day to submit those nomination papers is Tuesday, February 8th. The last day to object or withdraw from the election is Thursday, February 20, 2024. And the last day of voter registration is Wednesday, March 9th. And the town clerk's office will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for folks who want to come and register.
Any questions about the town election?
Okay, I, I believe you will vote a little bit later on, on the map. I will take my seat back in the audience.
If it pleases the board, we can take that out of order and vote on that now.
You had a busy weekend, I'm sure.
Oh, I have a printed.
With that said, let's see, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised precinct map as presented.
So moved.
And the, and the required documents.
And the required documents.
And the friendly amendment from the, the proponent. I would, I would move approval.
A second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. That passes five votes. Thank you so much, John, for all your work. We appreciate it.
It's a lot of work and it's important stuff. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we'll move to the town manager for an update on COVID.
Sure. Just wanted to give a brief update on where we are with COVID. And so we collect our data on Thursdays. We've been hovering around the hundred to a hundred and ten cases for the last few weeks. We have seen the cases per day decreasing, they've been going down to about 10 per day. But there was a point where we were actually seeing as high as 21 cases per day. So we're happy to see that our daily average is decreasing. Majority of the cases that we are seeing seems to be either household clusters, about 50%, although some of the ones we've been seeing more recently have been related to indoor sports. And so it's important for people who play on indoor sports or do, are doing indoor activities to get vaccinated because even if they are exposed and they're not vaccinated, they do have to quarantine. And we often have to end up quarantining an entire team, unfortunately. And that's been happening more frequently. Some interesting data that the state had put out recently is that 1.3% of fully vaccinated people in Massachusetts have contracted the virus. And so if you think about that, that's kind of interesting. It's one percent. Of that one percent, point zero four percent of vaccinated people have gone to the hospital with symptoms. And only 0.01% of vaccinated individuals have passed away from COVID. As of the middle of November, there have been four point, four million people vaccinated with 564,000 breakthrough cases. So kind of interesting. And that kind of made me look earlier today at our vaccine rates. And one thing that really stood out to me is that 39% of our population from five to 11 have now gotten their first shots, which I think is a huge step in the right direction considering that we only recently, right, beginning of November, were able to get those shots. Seventy-six percent of children ages 12 to 15 are now fully vaccinated. And 64% of kids 16 to 19 are fully vaccinated. And so we're starting to see that, that creep up, which I think is great. I just want to remind everybody that everyone is not eligible for a booster. So not, not based on age or comorbidities anymore, everyone is now eligible for a booster. And children ages five and up are also now eligible. We do have two clinics coming up, but both of those clinics are second shot clinics. So anyone who already got their vaccine through the health department, Angreter, Lawrence Family Health Center, Lat, the first dose clinic, don't forget that you have appointments scheduled either for Thursday, December 2nd or Friday, December 3rd. If you have any issues with those appointments, reach out to us so that we can help you reschedule them. And if you need help making an appointment for a vaccine, feel free to reach out to our office and we're happy to help schedule those as well. And we are encouraging people to get tested. The lines to get tested are very long right now. The reports that we got today and last week were as long as two hours. So people are now going to get tested. It seems like we're seeing a lot of other types of illness right now. For instance, we have SARS-CoV-2 flu cases, which I guess is both good and bad. Last year, we had no flu cases at all. So I think there's a lot of different symptoms happening. Sometimes people tend to ignore them, thinking they just have a cold or thinking it's just allergies. But a lot of the people who are vaccinated that we are seeing are really having symptoms that are allergy-like. Symptoms are low congestion. So it's better to get tested and err on the side of caution with that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Quick question. The sixteen, I think, I think I know the answer, but sixteen to nineteen year olds includes Merrimack students if they were vaccinated here, but only if they were vaccinated.
If they were vaccinated here, they gave our, and North Andover address when they got vaccinated, we would get theirs. We did have a small, I don't want to call it a cluster, but it was like a, it was a sports team related incident at Merrimack, but that has now kind of stopped, it's a fade out. So they're still doing their testing. They're on break now.
Do you have any information on like how Lawrence General's doing with capacity, I guess?
So I, what I've been told is that they're very busy, like as busy as they were kind of way back when this all first started. But I, I have not heard that they're turning people away or anything like that. But I've been told that they're all very busy right now.
That's alarming news.
It is alarming news. I think with the variant, we'll all be watching very closely to see. Yeah. So we'll continue to have masks in the buildings for the time being as we watch the numbers.
Hoping we'd be past this, but just have to stay vigilant at this point. Okay. I think that's it for governmental reports. And we voted on the precinct map. So we'll move on to the request from the exchange club of Lawrence to use the town common for the field of honor. Do we have anybody here from the exchange club?
No.
No? So they're here. How many years have they been doing it now?
This will be the third.
This will be the third year. So I, I love seeing it. I think it's a great thing for us to have and on our town common. So if anybody has any comments or questions, or if not, I'll take a motion to approve it.
I move that the select board approves the request of the exchange club of Lawrence and the Andovers to use the town common from May 21st, 2022 through June 12th, 2022 for the annual field of honor.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
And as you said, it's, it's great to see them and
It is.
People just love it. It's, it's a beautiful sight, actually. It really is. It's great.
To see, you see families walking through.
It's lovely.
It's special. It's very special to have in town. All right, we are going to move on to the festival committee's request to use the town common for the tree lighting on Sunday, December 4th, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Do you like to tell us about it, Jeff?
Hi, what indeed? Hi, Jeff Coco, 695 Johnson Street, co-chairman of the festival committee in North Andover. We're planning on holding our annual tree lighting on the December 4th Saturday, coming up this Saturday. We requested the use of the common for setup purposes from the timeframe and breakdown. That's why it goes so long, but the event hopefully will be run from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, give or take. People like to linger after the fact. We don't object to them being around. It's going to be a little bit different this year than we've had in the past, those of you who have attended. The real school of music this year could not participate because it's the first year post-COVID or extended COVID, if you will, that they're actually able to celebrate with their families. So a lot of them have gone home instead of stayed locally. So we weren't able to have them. We're going to have some 19th century carolers in period costume singing there. And we invite anybody else or any other group who'd like to participate from a caroling standpoint or anything along those lines, more than welcome. Santa Claus should be arriving approximately around 5:00 PM. There will be hot chocolate and cookies as usual and a lot of festivities. Any questions?
Just amazing how you get Santa Claus on that schedule every year.
You know, he's, he's really good to us. He really is. Also, this year, I'm sorry, just one more thing if you don't mind. Normally we have a grand marshal for our parade. This year, we tried getting a couple of people who just didn't want to do it. So with the select person, Smedili, we came up with a little different scheme of thanking our forefathers who've come before us. So I thought it would be appropriate if one of the select board this year would be the one who threw the switch or whomever you delegate from, from the, the board here all the way across, including maybe our esteemed town manager, if you like to do it. But I'll leave that up to you folks, whatever you, you would like to do, but we would appreciate that if that was the case.
No, we certainly all can put our hand in.
There you go.
All at the same time. Just use that, just in case.
We also plan on, last year, some of you remember, we put up a wreath over by the Phillipsburg statue and in memory of those lost to COVID. We're putting up a similar wreath this year, but we're going to put the 375th banner in the middle of it to celebrate the town's 375th anniversary. And we'd like to have all of you over there at some point, maybe for a little photo op. I think that'd be kind of nice to help publicize the event for the town.
And I believe it says, "Happy birthday, North Andover. Let's celebrate" or some, it says, "Let's celebrate", which is like, yeah.
There you go. Yes.
I've done so many, I kind of blend them together.
I hear you. I hear you.
Mr. Coco, will we be having the breakfast this year? The pancake breakfast?
We will not be having the breakfast this year as much as
So I don't have to dig my red smock out this year?
I, I even got you a new red hat this year, but we, we really couldn't do it because of the COVID issues and the underage children who are not vaccinated. We didn't want to turn a celebratory event into a super spreader.
Sure, makes sense.
And the way the kitchen is set up there and where it's basically a buffet, we thought it prudent not to have it this year.
All right, well, we'll look forward to it next year then.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for all of your efforts. I mean, getting the parade, the Santa parade was incredible. People were so happy to be out there. The whole committee and, and you, I know, leading the charge, we
Oh, thank you.
The excitement and joyfulness among everybody in town is, is great.
It's nice to have that respite, isn't it, from all the, everything else we deal with?
So, and I've already gotten questions about the tree lighting. So that's, I always, you're always right. Right on time to get them answered. Thank you.
Whatever you need, whatever you need. And some of you tried getting in touch with me during the parade and I apologize. It was very, very hectic and noisy. So those of you who tried, I apologize for not being able to get back to you in a timely fashion. But it all worked out.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking, we're looking forward to it. I know everybody in town is looking forward to it. So I'm glad that we can do it again this year, bring it back. So I will take a motion to approve the request.
Move that to select board, approve the request of the festival committee to use the town common for the annual tree lighting celebration on December 4th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so December 4th, Saturday, it starts at?
Hopefully 4:30. It's just getting dusky. You've, you've been there.
Yep.
You've been there, done it with me, all of you have. So, you know, we'd like to try and bring everybody in just as, and I hear it may possibly snow, which would make Dick very happy again this year. He was thrilled that we were able to arrange that two years ago and have it snow on cue. We may be there again this Saturday, but, and as soon as it gets dark, obviously, then Santa will be coming in. We'll have the fire department escort him in and the rest, they say, from there is history, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Our last item, we are going to talk about creating a subcommittee to negotiate with our town manager for her next contract. Time again. It's back.
Well, I would certainly be interested in, on being on the negotiation subcommittee. The board would have me.
Anybody else have any?
I think the chair should be on the subcommittee, for sure.
Choose who it takes.
Choose who it takes.
Yeah, are you?
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I'm more than willing, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody.
Yeah, everybody's all willing. How many?
They can only be two of us, right?
So how do we draw lots?
Draw lots, yeah.
Guess a number? We want to be fair.
My biggest request is that one of the newer members, which should be Laura, because she's the chair, are involved, just, it's how, you know.
To learn.
Just to learn from experience, so.
Yeah, I definitely think the chair should be involved and then one other member, obviously.
Yeah? Dick, are you, you also would be interested?
I would be interested, too.
So the way I've done this in the past is that maybe, I know it's been how I've done it before, but typically what happens is we have post-subcommittee meetings, just like we do for when we interview our commission members, and we have, you know, public, it's public, people could come, we don't film them, but we negotiate the contract, and then it's placed on an executive session so that the subcommittee can come back and report back to the committee as a whole in executive. And then you come out and we would talk about it in public session. That's typically how I would see it happen. So even though everyone's not involved in that kind of preliminary discussion, there certainly is the opportunity for additional conversation in the executive session later as well. And you could typically have three people, honestly, because it's a subcommittee and we have to post it no matter what, whether you have two, three, four, or five, it really doesn't matter. It's still a public session.
Wow. More than ever.
Oh, it could beautifully be three. Yeah, three.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, what is?
Yeah?
Sure.
So what's the three? I mean, what's the other two?
So are we going to settle on three, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, if the three of us are.
I was anticipating only being able to have two.
Okay, yeah, I was too. Yeah. I mean, that's fine, about the three of us. I'm fine with that. Okay, yeah.
So we need a formal motion?
We do need a motion to create a subcommittee.
I'll make a motion that we create a negotiating subcommittee to negotiate the town manager's upcoming contract, and that committee consists of the chair, Laura Bates, our select person Smedili, and select person Valen Clark. Can I make a motion with myself?
You can.
Okay.
Can both be, it's up to.
Yeah. As you should.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
We will set that up.
Sounds good.
We're going to move into licensing. So I will take a motion to move into licensing.
Move to open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission. Okay.
I have a motion. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Over to you.
Okay. Which is so exciting. So we get kind of two requests here that are related. One from Fireside Catering and the other from the Candy Dish about waiving or prorating the licensing application fee. And this really emanates from the fact that, well, starting with Fireside, they had, and it's in our packet tonight, sent us a letter asking that since they are just going to have one event this year and finishing the renovation of the space, that their feeling is that this is, and I'm paraphrasing here, onerous to paying the full fee for a full year. And so they're asking us to have some consideration for that. That's, in essence, what the letter's about. Now, I don't, technically, kind of, where does this fall?
Right, so in the end of the day, they actually ended up only getting their license now. Did they get it yet?
They did. They got it. Was it Monday? Monday.
Yeah, it was last.
Before the holiday, yes.
So they'll end up only having it for one month, and then their annual renewal comes up. So that's kind of the crux of the issue. So they pay three, they'll end up having to pay $3,000 to have the license for only one month, and then January 1st, all the renewals come up and they're paying additional $3,000. So what they're basically requesting is that we only charge them for 11 months, or they're requesting we only charge them for one day. We're suggesting that we only charge, we don't charge them for the 11 months, since they only actually have the license for one month.
Which would be the $250.
Should be $250.
Yeah, I actually, you know, I thought about that this afternoon, too, and I think, you know, it's not something we normally do, but for one month, and then that is a significant amount of money for a one month, you know, to only have the license for one month. So, yeah, I think I would be okay with that to have the 250.
I was reading something, but, so I might have missed it. So do they have, how many events do they have scheduled for that one?
They're only going to have the one month, one meeting on one event on December 4th, and then they're basically shutting down because they're going to be doing some repairs and renovations.
Okay, so it's quite inexpensive.
Yes. It's an expensive event. So it's unusual, however, you set the fees, so you do have the right to waive them, unlike fees that are set by town meeting where we would not be able to do this. You actually set the fee yourself, so you are able to do a forbearance or waive the fee if you saw fit.
To me, it makes sense to go by a month that they're operating, so that, I mean, they are open, right? They could have, I guess, technically had more events.
And also, there were town resources that were used to get them the license, so I think, you know, we should consider that as well.
And they're operating. So I'm fine with the 1/12.
I agree, I'm very comfortable with the one-month fee.
I think all, I think it seems reasonable, they've had an opportunity to do business for the one month. So I'd be happy to take a motion that reflects that.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Fireside Catering to prorate their 2021 license application fee and reduce the fee to, is it 250? 250, which is 1/12.
I'll second.
Great. If there's any other discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. So we have comparable, comparable scenario with the Candy Dish. They opened their doors October 9th, I believe, and again, they've been operating a very short period of time, and the fee for the renewal is coming up. They've asked for consideration again.
Mr. Chair, they were issued their license in August.
August, okay. Thank you.
And the town clerk recommends, just the same with Fireside, that you prorate it from the first full month, so it was like the end of August, so you would prorate from September to December.
That seems fairly reasonable.
Yes, well.
And that's just what you just did for Fireside.
Exactly.
So to be consistent.
Is everybody comfortable with that, that kind of approach here?
Absolutely. The last thing we want to do is be burdensome to a new business.
Yeah.
We definitely want them to stay.
Says anybody who's tasted any of it, right?
But when did, when did they actually, oh, they opened on October 9th. So they kind of got the license a little early then.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, fair as they are, they could have opened earlier, but I'm guessing not due construction and such, but, so, yeah, I guess that makes sense to kind of give them the same type of consideration.
So the amount's actually $666.67 that they would.
What is it?
667.
$666.67.
Is what they would pay in 2022.
Correct.
So we reduce the fee.
And then they'll pay it again.
They'll pay a new $2,000.
In.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm confused.
We're going to refund them.
We're going to refund them and apply it towards the next year because they already paid. Fireside hadn't paid yet because we just gave them the license on Monday, so we told them to wait. So they actually will come in with a $250 check. The Candy Dish paid.
I see, so we're going to refund them money.
Recalculate the amount, whatever the overage is deducted from the $2,000 that they're going to owe for 2022. I think that's a good point.
That's good. Well, I'm appreciative of kind of the board working this out. I think that's sort of, when we have that opportunity, I think it's good. So I'll just take a motion and formalize this.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of the Candy Dish to prorate their 2021 license application fee and reduce the fee to $666.67 with the refund amount to be applied to their 2022 license renewal fee.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I thought it was 8:33. It was five months.
Five months, because we, it's, five months count at August, but we said the first full month actually started in September.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it was four months.
Yeah, so it's actually four months.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Laura.
And it also just brings up the question as to whether you, as a commission, want to make this practice part of the regs. If you have questions on it, you can ask our town clerk. They did do this in Andover. They do on their, as a regular practice, depending on when you get your license, do proration of a certain amount. So you might want to think about it if you do want to make it part of the regulations and, you know, if you get your license after September 1st, then maybe a proration kicks in, or however, however you'd like to do it.
I think we would need to see a schedule.
Yeah.
Yep.
A proposal.
And I do think you make a very good point is, yes, towards the end of the year, not, we shouldn't be doing it throughout the whole year. That's, we wouldn't do that to.
Right.
Really, pretty much any other business. It does make sense towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
Last quarter or whatever.
So if you'd like, she can come up with a proposal to present to you, or.
That'd be great.
We can just leave it as is and.
No, I think that's a fair thing. I mean, we're, again, we're, the community's trying to facilitate, but there's also an expense to doing this and an investment by the company, so, yeah, let's do that.
I don't think this comes on all that often.
No, this was just, yeah, one of those unusual circumstances.
But, you know, we're a growing community. Look how many businesses have located in the past couple of months, so.
We want to be business-friendly.
Yeah. You look down the road.
And we want to be comparable to our diverse, right?
Yes.
I think that's the other.
That makes sense.
Good, okay. So I just need a vote after, because we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes 5-0. Okay, next, we have a application from Tricia Dumphy of Smolak Farm for two one-day wine and malt liquor licenses and a waiver of the police detail for holiday wine and wreath making in the barn on December 1st, 2021, and December 7th, 2021, both from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Anybody here to speak to that?
Well, just some exciting news. This should be the last one-day license.
That's right.
Because I, well, I met with Mike on Tuesday on Smolak, and they have received their catering license.
Yes.
We were very excited. So I don't know if they even actually need this, but let's do it just in case. But they have received the license. It's in my car, actually.
You gotta drive it right there.
Driving it right around, yeah. But he gave it to me when I was there.
We settle Stevens Estate, we think this is like, we could get it all squared.
Right, we're going to very short licensing meetings now, so, yeah, so this was great news. He was very thankful to the team for letting him know that that was an option because it's going to streamline their processes as well, so.
That's great. So we've got, everything's in our packet, it's all set. This is our salve to this process. Any, any other thoughts or comments other than?
Right. And is there any limitations on this catering list, on the catering? Nope. They can just hold their events, right?
Yep, they hold their events. They do catering already, so it will work out much easier for them. And in this instance, it makes it difficult because they have to figure out how they're going to store the alcohol, it has to leave the site immediately, it's very difficult under the one-day licenses, so this will be, this will be huge for them, which is great.
Well, it's the same sort of thing we sorted out with Merrimack. I think we get, we figure it out over time for these sort of institutions. Awesome. You need, just need a motion, if I could?
I move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application of Tricia Dumphy of Smolak Farms for two one-day wine and malt liquor licenses and waive the police detail for the holiday wine and wreath making in the barn on December 1st, 2021, and December 7th, 2021, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, your last license, be warned. One-day license, I should say. Let's be very clear on that.
So entertainment.
And then I'm not going to know what's going on, I'm going to have to.
That's true. That's what happened with Merrimack, too. We don't know when to have all the party.
You use that community calendar.
I know. I'm guessing the wreath making is all sold out, like everything else.
That's great. All right, we just have one more item, and that's an application from Brian Howard of the North Andover Historical Society for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for reception on December 10th, 2021, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Mr. Chair, Brian is in the audience.
Brian, if you want to come and speak to it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Howard, 153 Academy Road. Thank the select board for hearing our application tonight, and something that was mentioned just a few moments ago about the select board not wanting to be burdensome to business in town really resonated with me. Even though the historical society's been around since 1913, a lot of what we're doing with the renovation, the move into the Stevens Center, really, for all intents and purposes, is creating a new business. And it's vital to us to ensure that we're doing things above board, by the book, and that we have a full understanding of what's necessary as we get the facility rental activity in particular up and running. So that said, I sincerely appreciate the communication that I've had with, with the select board, with the town, in, in helping us, helping marshal us through this process because this is our first time around. So we did have one other item on there. I had submitted a waiver for the police detail as well. It's not reflected in the motion. I don't know if that made it into the, into the agenda anywhere, but that was submitted several days back. I don't know.
You sent that to the death, right?
That, yeah. So that. So that.
So tell us about the event.
Well, the, the event is part of the historical society's capital campaign efforts. As you know, this is a privately funded, huge effort to renovate the Stevens Center and to create this community space for everybody to come in and enjoy. And we've had a very good year. We've had a lot of support come in from many corners of the community. And this event, it's, it's a private event as a thank you for our campaign, donors and prospects to update them on the project. We will be rolling out a campaign video that we've had a lot of support from North Andover. Cam on, Brian, thank you very much. And just, just really an opportunity for us to, to say thank you to everybody who has made the investment in us and the investment in the vision that, that we have to create a great new community resource. So that's, that's what we're looking at, and it's also with the permitting process, it's a real opportunity for us to, to learn what we're going to need, hopefully many, many times more as the facility gets completely up and running in 2022.
Excellent, wonderful. Any other questions from the board?
I guess my only question was on the police detail. Is it, where does the police department fall on that?
The police department is recommending a detail.
It is a busy, it's a busy street between two, very busy intersection between the Rotary and Mass Ave, and I.
I think that's sort of the challenge with it is we just gotta err on the side of safety.
Understood.
And I think as time goes on and maybe they get experience with the events, and that's what happened with Smolak too, over time, they released the police detail.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was curious about is, you know, being, COVID has thrown a monkey wrench into my, you know, everybody's time, but I still feel, I've been here about two years, but still feel very new to the, the area. The exact functions of a police detail are unclear to me, other than the basic security and traffic directing. Could you elaborate a bit on, on what, what their functions are with these types of events and what we can expect?
Well, I think that's pretty much up to them. I mean, it's the police department, as members of the board of selectmen and town manager, they, we cannot direct public safety people on how they handle public safety. But I think the very fact that you've got the Rotary and a busy intersection and a lot of people crossing over and walking and dogs that could get loose and all kinds of stuff, that I think, not knowing, not doing this, really, that I can think of any time recently, they, I think they're wise to err on the side of caution in this particular case. But they, I would imagine they're gonna stop traffic to let people pull in and out.
Okay.
And people walking too. I mean, if the weather's nice, it just, it's, these are just sort of the trade-offs. I mean, that's, that's part of what makes that location great, is lots of people get to it.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not really designed for people to do that all at once, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's, this kind of comes with it. If we have more parking, it'd be great.
Where it's so new, right? People aren't used to people coming and going out of that location, so it'll bring some presence with the cruiser there.
Yeah, the, the, the small events and activities that we've already had, including one that, that we just came from this, this evening, have, have really been a good reminder as to, as to some of the challenges that we're gonna be facing as, as we get, again, completely up and running. You know, even the, the small-scale activities there have, have given us lots of learning opportunities and identified some challenges that we hadn't thought of before. So I, I appreciate the explanation.
And I think it's wonderful. Like, it's such a great use of the space and, so it's just a learning curve.
It's nice to see the lights on.
It's nice to have them on. Thank you.
Thank you for edifying this. I'll take a motion, if we could.
With police detail.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great event.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Brian.
With that, that wraps up licensing, so motion to exit licensing?
I move to close the meeting of licensing commissioners.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, we are moving on to our consent items. We have an affordable unit resale at Eighth Cider Press Way. We will be accepting a grant in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Mills to Hills Trail, and we'll also be accepting our Housing Choice Community Grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. We have a nice memo in our packet from Andrew Shapiro thanking our state delegation for their hard work in securing those funds for the town. Their projects that we probably couldn't get off the ground without that money. So I am really looking forward to that boardwalk trail from the, from the Mills to downtown. I think that will be such a nice addition.
So that, that trailer exists. But this is to enhance it?
Yeah, this is to make a connection between Main Street, from Main Street. So this is actually just the design, engineering, and permitting of it. And then we'll have to get additional funding to actually do the construction, although I think it may, we may end up seeing it in the capital improvement plan this year. And we actually just got lucky. We asked the House and the Senate with just slightly different language and got both. It was great, because that's actually how much we needed to do the actual work, so.
And of course, the Housing Choice Community allows us a lot of, affords us some great opportunities.
Yeah, so we had put in a lot of different applications, and the one that ended up getting selected was to do the zoning for downtown. So that would be great. We got seventy-five thousand dollars to do that zoning. And both of these are in the master plan, so two more things moving forward from the master plan.
Excellent.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, any questions or comments?
Move approval of all the consent items.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Move on to our approval of our November eighth, 2021 minutes. Does anybody have any comments or adjustments or anything? Then I will take a motion.
Move that the select board approve the open session minutes of November eighth, 2021, as written.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we do not have old business. Do we have anything from the town manager report?
Just a couple of things. We do have our final school capacity forum tomorrow at the youth center at seven PM. If we have more than six people, it will be the winning winner. Is that seven tomorrow, right? Wednesday, Wednesday. Today's only Monday. I took tomorrow off, so I'm just skipping tomorrow entirely, I guess. Wednesday at seven PM, we've had, most people we've had has been six, so we're hoping we get a bigger crowd on Wednesday at seven. We are hosting a mitten tree downstairs. Dawn's office has, has set it up. It's adorable. So if you bring in a mitten or a hat or a scarf to fit, to fit children and teenagers, you can take a candy cane off and put that on, and we would appreciate it. This is for Selectman Valencourt, the, because he's gonna call me soon and ask me. The Sierra Cycling Center is gonna stay open. I feel like every year we, we talk about this, right? Weather permitting, through Wednesday, twelve twenty-two. So once the ground gets wet, people get stuck in there, and so we don't, we try to avoid that. So fingers crossed that we can keep it open as long as we can. I know a lot of people are still collecting their leaves and everything else, so we're staying open to twelve twenty-two for that. We are collecting some middles for the North Andover Holiday Lights map, so probably only have two. Last year it was super successful, so send them in to Sarah because she's very excited about it. We're having a Kramer Cruiser event the next three Saturdays from nine AM to noon at Market Basket. We're gonna be collecting non-perishable food and personal care items. We do have our op-er survey out. The link that is printed on the card, or the one with North Andover spelled with only one O, both work. So you can do it either way. It didn't before, but it does now. But if you need a paper copy of the survey, you can call our office and we will get you a paper copy, or we will fill it out with you on the phone, if you want. And so we're happy to help with that. Community preservation applications are currently open, so that's exciting. And finally, the fire department is holding a Toys for Tots drive, and you can drop your items off at the fire department. I think that's it. There's a lot going on right now. Yeah.
And the tree lighting on Saturday.
And the tree lighting on Saturday, I knew that was already there, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to stale Jeff's thunder with that.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any selectmen updates or comments? What about the merchants bingo?
Oh, yes, sorry. Merchants Bingo is going on now, except you have to just go to their Facebook page, to their website, and download the card yourself. You don't have to find a person to get it. You can get the card all on your own. If you fill in five spots, you'll get entered to win a hundred dollar gift card. And there's like four different cards to choose from, so you can choose wisely with the places that you're most likely to shop. And I'm pretty sure we're expecting the elf to make a return this year as well.
There's the banners and the wreaths are up.
Most of them. We still have a few more that will go up, going, particularly going down Chestnut Street and from approximately the Parson Barnard House up to the light. Those are not, those are not up unless they did them today.
They are. They, yes, they are.
They are. From the, the, the light at Mass Ave and Osgood.
I drove it every day. I thought I saw them, so I could be wrong.
I didn't see them, but you know, they, they are very busy and they don't, I give them the list and we go over it and, and I go out and there they are. So, so if they're not up, if yours isn't up, then it's probably forthcoming in the next few days, so. Had some cold windy weather and rain one day, and it is what it is, but they're working hard. They work really hard, actually. And they're, they're lighting the tree and all good.
Anybody else? No? So our next meeting will be December thirteenth. I believe we're gonna start early for the select board, if we can. And then we're gonna go into a tri-board meeting with the school committee and the FINCOM to talk about the financial forecasts and the SIP.
Yes.
And so we can all kind of hear the same information at the same time and have an open discussion about that. Lots of good things happening, so. That will be December thirteenth, and with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.